This meeting of the Select Board on October 10, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 20f, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay, seeing none. First on our agenda is an executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a6, to discuss potential acquisition of real estate. The Board will reconvene in open session after the executive session. Before I undertake a motion to go into executive session under Item 2 of the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
With that, I make a motion to enter executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a6, to discuss potential acquisition of real estate. The Board will reconvene in open session after the executive session.
I would second that motion.
Roll call of vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We will be back.
Your limo person's here, too.
Just waiting for Joe.
Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I think we have one set. Are you ready?
Ready to go.
It's September 26.
Oh, you're the last.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated September 26, 2023.
Second.
Roll call of vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is to consider the issuance of a limousine license to Diamond Comfort Rides. I believe we have Mr. Robert Small with us. Welcome. Can you hear us?
I can't tell if he's froze.
It looks like he's frozen.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Small, it looks like we have a bad connection.
We'll come back to him.
Yeah. Well, we'll come back to you. We'll go on to the next agenda item and come back. If you want to call in, that's fine.
Does someone have the ability to call him? He may not have heard.
Any of them?
I'll ask Michelle to do it.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is to consider the agreement with Colonial Municipal Group for two 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel-drive K-9 vehicles for the police department. We have with us Chief Jones.
Evening.
Deputy Chief Cathy, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to start us off, Chief?
I will, sure. So, this is for the replacement of our two current K-9 vehicles. They're nearing their end of life. One of them has 96,000 miles on it, and the other isn't far behind. Obviously, we need vehicles that are in good working order, mechanical order, for the safety and health of the animals that are in them for the whole shift. So, we're looking to purchase two 2023 Tahos for that purpose.
Okay, excellent. And we expect to get them by the end of the year?
Yes.
December 31st? Okay. And this was part of the capital budget for FY '24, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Perfect. Joe, do you have any questions?
Just a couple. What do we expect the useful life of these vehicles to be?
So, it's assigned to one officer and their K-9. Generally, we tend to get about five to six years out of them. These ones are a 2018 and a 2019, the two current vehicles.
And what is happening to the current vehicles?
So, it looks like one of them is going to be repurposed for the comfort dog because it's already set up as a K-9 vehicle, so it has all the equipment in it.
The dog treats hidden.
They'll be well hidden in the vehicle. And then the other one, traded in. There's not a high value for the K-9 vehicles, as you can imagine, with the dogs in them. They get sort of beat up, so.
Great. No other questions?
Bill?
The two K-9s, is it Officer Ross's dog and Officer Lobianco's dog?
Correct, yes.
Got it. Okay, great. No questions? I know we budgeted for it, so.
No questions.
Excellent. I'm ready to take a motion. Sorry? Oh, public comment. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none.
With that, I move to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Colonial Municipal Group for two 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel-drive K-9 vehicles for the police department in an amount not to exceed $138,267.90.
Roll call of vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously.
Chief, you have an event coming up at Wahlburgers, fundraiser?
We do, so.
End of the month, you want to talk about it real quick?
This is the 24th, which I believe is Tuesday. It's an event for Breast Cancer Awareness Campaign that we do every year. And Wahlburgers is gracious. They offer every year for us to hold a fundraiser there where a certain percentage of the sales go to our department, and we in turn donate that and any, you know, sales we have from the patches that we sell to Dana Farber Cancer Institute in Boston.
Great. Thank you for doing that.
So, yeah, public's welcome. It's a great event.
Thanks for doing that.
And Audrey will be there, so.
I was. Better.
Excellent. Thank you for doing that.
Of course, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Good to see you.
All right. We'll go back. Mr. Small, can you hear us?
Liz, he's trying to come back in.
Okay. All right. We'll keep going. Next on the agenda is to consider the agreement with Shrewsbury Landscapes Incorporated for infield renovations at Carlson and Haley Fields. Hi, Mark. How are you?
Good evening. So, yes, we're looking to partner with Hingham Little League, who's been very generous with their offer to pay for 50% of this capital project, and we're looking to renovate the infield of Carlson and Haley. And the main purpose to renovate the infield is to get rid of the lips that have formed around the edge of the infield dirt with the grass. Over time, the infield dirt will migrate underneath the grass, and it kind of causes a lump to form. So, the main purpose of this renovation is to make the field safe for Hingham Little League kids and the public to use.
Excellent. Thank you. Can you just describe the funding source again?
Sure. The funding source would be Hingham Little League paying 50%, and then the RECC revolving fund paying the other 50%.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay.
It's a 50%.
So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little League didn't give us the funds, the RECC revolving fund.
Okay. So, does the private funds from Hingham Little League, does that go through a gift account, or?
We haven't collected the funds yet, so in the unlikely event that Hingham Little
League didn't give us the funds, the rec revolving fund would pay 100% for the project.
Okay. Got it. And it looks like the term is through the end of this year. Do we expect the work to happen this fall?
Yes, we expect it to start by the end of October, beginning of November, and finish probably early December.
Okay. Okay, great. Joe?
So, will these renovations make it easier to have an infield home run? Is that...
Is that part of the goal here? Unfortunately, no.
Depends on the team.
That's right.
The price, the $57,96, my understanding is that's not the town share, that's the total.
That's the total to infield.
And then 50% hopefully coming in. Do we know, I want to just follow up on Liz's question. Do we know where those funds currently reside, the Little League funds?
The Little League funds with Hingham Little League right now.
So, in other words, they keep it in a bank account? Do you know where they are?
Oh, I'm not. I'm not sure.
So, we don't know if it's like something they're going to do a fundraiser to collect it or whether they're...
No, they already have the money.
They already do have it, okay.
And they've taken the formal vote amongst their board members.
Got it. Okay. No other questions? I think this is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yes, I know you said you were going to use rec revolving for the town side of it. Why wouldn't you use field maintenance funds? I mean, it's field maintenance.
We could. I just kind of figured that it was a capital project, so I wasn't sure if it would be correct to use those funds or not, but it's something that I certainly could talk to Tom or Michelle or Art about, so I'm open to that. But just with the cost of it, I figure that it's more of a capital project. So, that's what I was thinking, that at the end of the day, maybe it should just be coming from the rec revolving account.
If it's infield dirt, like how is it a capital project? Because you're going to completely...
It's construction.
Oh, the construction.
You know, public works, sort of, outdoor.
Makes sense.
Digging, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah.
Prevailing wage.
Yeah, I guess with the field maintenance fund, it's probably more for the grass seed.
Right.
It does pay for...
Sprinkler.
Like, if the project is lessened scope, it does pay for infield dirt being installed and all that. I think just the level of scope with this project, I think, made it more of a capital project and thus why I recommended the rec revolving fund to pay for it, but...
And when are you going to do it? You going to do it now or are you going to wait until the spring?
Yeah, start in end of October and then hopefully finish beginning of December.
So, doing it now and with the snow and ice won't impact it at all or...
They'll lay all new sod, about 8,000 square feet of sod per infield before the frost sets in. And then once the frost sets in for the winter time and then the spring, the weather starts to warm up and it'll really take root and it'll be, should be good for April 1st.
Great. I mean, obviously, those fields, particularly Haley, is, you know, in the years past have been really extremely dusty. We had a really wet spring, summer this year, which helped a little bit, but I think this is definitely needed. And I know Carlson is considered to be like the crown jewel of the Hingham Little League field, so it's only going to help make that feel better, so...
Yes, I think so. Yeah, thank you.
Excellent.
If I can just follow up?
Sure.
So, you view this as a capital project. To me, that means this is not an annual recurring event. It would be maybe every few years or...
Yes, we try to...
How frequently do you think you'd need to do this work?
The town of Hingham has about 16 infills. And so, our goal is to try to renovate one per year.
Right, but the renovation, how long, for that field, how long would it last?
Oh, I think it'll last about a dozen years.
Okay, so that makes sense to treat it as a capital project. Okay.
Okay. Excellent.
Are you going to do Hershey next year? Are you planning to do Hershey next year?
That could be on the potential list, yeah.
Okay.
That one's a little tougher because there's no irrigation.
Yeah.
So, when you lay the sod down, we'd have to just figure out a way to get some sprinklers down there to irrigate it. I would worry sod gets finicky if you don't have enough water on it, so that one's a little tougher, but we'll figure out a way.
Just use so much?
Yeah.
I mean, and then Lynch would be the other one, but those diamonds are pretty good shape for now, so, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Shrewsbury Landscapes Incorporated for infield renovations at Carlson and Haley Fields in an amount not to exceed $57,986.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mark. And thank you to the Hingham Little League for such a productive...
Hello? Yes, I am unmuted. Can you all hear me?
Excellent. We can hear you now. Thank you for calling in.
You're welcome. Sorry about that mishap. It's not April Fool's Day, so I was not trying to pull any tricks.
No worries. We sometimes have technical issues, unfortunately, but we're glad you're here. Can you tell us a little bit about your application?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you just tell us a little bit about your business and the application?
Yes, my business... Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. A little feedback.
Sorry, my fault. Go ahead.
You want me to... Okay. You want me to tell you a little bit about my business? A little bit about my business is that it is a transportation service, more of a personal transportation, more of one that deals with taking people to the airport, to their doctor's appointments, to and from their doctor's appointments, or other personal runs. So, my business also, what we have is two vehicles as of now, and it's more of a small-time thing, not, nothing big.
Okay, and you have two vehicles? Is that right?
Yes, I do. Yes, currently.
Okay. And I see the Corey form, so the application is complete?
Yes.
Okay. And I know we had asked about the insurance and that was all correct, too, Tom, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, everything there on the application was correct.
Okay, excellent. Joe, do you have any questions?
I just want to be clear. This is for two vehicles and two drivers. Is that correct?
Yes, but mainly it'll be myself. The other driver's kind of like a backup.
Got it. And you understand that this application is through the end of this calendar year?
Yes, it's through the end of the calendar year, correct? Am I saying here you right?
Yes. Okay.
Oh, yeah. I do know now, yes.
Okay.
So, would he be required to submit another application in January if he were to continue?
I think he would, right?
Yeah.
Yes, but since it's such a short amount of time, you normally don't charge people any additional...
Right, yeah. So, I think the answer there is you should contact the select board office just to make sure that there's continuity after the calendar year. Contact them in December.
Okay.
Great.
Excellent. Thank you. Bill?
I have no questions. Good luck, Mr. Small.
I'll say that again. Go ahead.
I said no questions, sir. Good luck with your business.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I'll be looking forward to you guys. You need a ride, just give me a call. I know this is going to come in, so...
I'm going to write down your number.
If something happens, I'll be here for you.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the issuance of a limousine license to Robert D. Small on behalf of Diamond Comfort Rides effective through December 31, 2023, in accordance with the application for a limousine license on file with the town of Hingham and to approve Michelle J. Small as an additional driver.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Small. Good luck.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. You guys have a great day as well.
You, too. All right. Next on the agenda is to consider agreement with Colonial Ford Incorporated for a 2023 Ford F-250 XL 4x4 for the sewer department. I believe we have DPW Superintendent Randy Sylvester with us. Hi, Randy. How are you? Hi. Do you want to start or...?
You can hear me already?
We can.
Okay. So, you just explained it all. It's a 23, 2023 Ford F-250 4x4 with a plow and all, everything that we need for it to be out on the road in snowplow and whatnot. It is in the sewer department's budget. The cost of this vehicle is $57,349.90. It was, this purchase was, well, the money in the budget was for replacing S3, which is a, which is a one-ton Chevy utility body with a plow. And that would cost $77,000, and that's what's in the budget. So, this is $20,000 less. We are keeping that utility vehicle because it's in pretty good shape. There's 57,000 miles on it. We won't drive it as hard or as much on a daily basis. It will be used in emergencies. It's equipped, it's equipped for the emergencies. And the 250 would be driving on a daily basis for station checks and whatnot and maintenance.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So, did you say the budget amount was $77,000?
Correct.
And this went through the Plymouth County?
Yes.
Right? Cooperative contract?
Yes.
Okay, great. And it looks like it's in stock, so we'll get it soon? You're expecting it soon?
It is in stock and it is green. It's a sewer department's colors.
Excellent.
Perfect.
Okay. Joe, do you have any questions?
Randy, I understand you're keeping the existing vehicle as backup?
Yes. Yes. It is a utility body. This is not. It's all outfitted for main breaks and whatnot and station maintenance. So, because it has low miles and it's in pretty good condition, I thought it would be better to buy a lesser vehicle and keep this in-house and ready to roll.
But you think we need both is what I might want to make sure.
We do at this point, yes.
Okay. And I know we're keeping the existing vehicle, but any sense of its dollar value, trade-in value?
I don't have that. I do not know.
And we're not trading it in, but I just wanted to understand the...
We're not trading it.
Got it, but...
I don't have a trade-in value on it.
Great. And I do see it's in stock and we get it, it looks like within a month.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's terrific.
Yes.
And where would this be garaged?
This would be garaged at the DPW.
Got it.
As all the sewer vehicles are.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you, sir.
Bill?
I have no questions, just it's great that it can be cross-purposed for snowplowing as well as sewer use, so, thank you.
And Randy, can you just, can you just confirm the price? I might have misheard you.
Fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
I just want to make sure.
Ninety cents.
I didn't want our vote to be off by ninety cents and then...
I can't buy it if you're off by ninety.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Colonial Ford Incorporated for a 2023 Ford F-250 XL 4x4 truck for the sewer department in an amount not to exceed $57,349.90.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is...
Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy. Discussion and potential vote regarding a regulatory agreement and LIP application for one deed-restricted single-family home located at 270 Central Street. Jennifer Oram, come on up. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So, this evening, I've submitted an application on behalf of the trust for the review of both the LIP application and the regulatory agreement for the 270 Central Street. This property sounds familiar. Most likely, it's been in front of you on updates and the Article 28 that allowed us to put this together so we can get a subsidized inventory unit out of this application. It's been preliminary reviewed with the state, so it's in good shape. So, this vote will allow us to submit it for review. And once approved, we can then hold our lottery and put in a, that'll take about 60 days once we receive it back, and then a closing, and then we'll have hopefully a new family in the home by the beginning of the new year.
Excellent. And this was the property that was formerly South Shore Habitat for Humanity, correct?
That's correct.
And then we did the town meeting vote to remove the local restriction, right?
Right.
So, then it would count towards the SHI.
Correct. And we'll use the EOHLC standard regulatory deed rider in place of it, which is what you'll see in front of you in a second.
Yes.
Application.
And this is the home that we toured together, right?
Correct. Yes, yes.
It's gorgeous. So, this is really exciting. Thank you for all your hard work on this.
It's been a pleasure. Really good.
Joe, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, I've reviewed this. Looks in order. Glad to see that we are proceeding. No questions.
Bill?
I have no questions, yes. Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
I move to authorize the town administrator to execute the regulatory agreement as well as the LIP application for one deed-restricted, single-family home located at 270 Central Street contingent upon final approval by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, discussion and potential vote on the select board naming policy. Tommy, you want to walk us through?
Sure. So, a couple of weeks, we introduced a potential naming policy that Joe and I have been working on with Town Council, John Coughlin. We've socialized it now. It's been on the website for download. We published a request for feedback to our town administrator email account. We've received a grand total of one reply. I haven't heard too much feedback, frankly, but that doesn't mean that we won't. It's just we haven't as yet. There's nothing really before the town, so it's not surprising. But I think that's the, that's the state of the discussion right now.
Yes, thank you. And we, just to recap, we first introduced this as a board two weeks ago, so we've had some time to think about it. And as Tom mentioned, certainly, we're looking for resident feedback. I saw one comment late today, so certainly want to read that over and consider it a little more carefully. I was expecting feedback from another resident by the end of today, so I'm happy to discuss
Yes, thank you. Um, and we, just to recap, we, we, we first introduced this as a board um two weeks ago, so we've had some time to, to think about it. Um, and as Tom mentioned, certainly we're looking for resident feedback. Um, I saw one comment late today, so certainly want to read that over and consider it a little more carefully. Um, I was expecting uh feedback from another resident by the end of today, so um I'm happy to discuss it, but I'm not ready to move forward with a vote. I want to consider that resident feedback first. Joe, I know you've been close to this the whole time.
I'm close, but I, I think getting feedback from residents is very important. Um, and so uh I would support not doing a vote this evening, uh perhaps extending into our next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then making sure that on the website, I'm not sure where it's posted, that folks know they should have, let's say, until the end of next week to get us additional comments so that we can consider all of them.
Great, that sounds.
I can ask the IT department too to refresh it so it's up at the top of the page, sometimes they get buried in the news, so we'll, we'll bring it back to the top.
Okay, great. Bill?
No problem waiting at all. I think feedback would be um helpful to us in working through this.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? I don't know if people joined us to discuss this tonight. Anyone want, want to offer a comment? Oh, okay. All right, so we will make sure this is on the agenda for our next meeting.
We'll do.
I don't know if we've decided if we're meeting next Tuesday.
We haven't fully decided, but.
Okay, so it'll be the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth?
Yep.
Um, and certainly, if you have questions or comments or feedback, please send them our way. Um, I think we were collecting them through the town administrator email.
That's right.
So that's the best way to, to submit feedback. Excellent. Next on the agenda, Select Board FY twenty-four Goals and Objectives Review and Update.
Great. So, how many months ago now? Was it four months ago, maybe, three months ago? Presumably three.
Yeah, so this is the end of the fir, well, this is the Q-one review.
Q-one review, that's right, that's what we're going to call it. So call it three months. Um, the Select Board had created a series of goals for our um collective um completion through the end of the, end of the fiscal year. Um, through Q-one, we've made some progress, um, in a, well, we made a lot of progress, um, some in, in different stages of, of completion, but um I'm going to walk through today some of the highlights in each of the five categories that were identified and what we've done, and um, and we can dig in as you guys um feel you need to.
Excellent.
So there were, well, there were five general categories. Um, we start with uh building the team, and then we had a category for driving process improvement. We wanted to identify revenue opportunities. Uh, the master plan effort was a ma, was a big one for a number of years, where at the stage now where we need to implement the goals outlined in that master plan. And then uh we, of course, have several large capital projects that we're working through. So, um, item one, uh, within build the team, we had thirty-five uh positions vacant at the time uh these goals were set, and uh about nine of them have been for, uh, filled so far. Several of them are pending actively. We started two new people today. Um, it takes time to onboard people, especially when you get nowadays, we're getting fewer and fewer applicants. So we end up having to post two and three times sometimes, and it just, it just takes a lot of time to get through these, this, this effort, so. Um, to that end, just so everyone knows, I'm working actively on a number of strategic initiatives to try to improve our um, our position in terms of uh being a, an attractive workplace for, for future postings. Um, we'll, we'll see how that goes. Uh, hopefully I'll be able to roll things out here in the near future, but trying to a, address that problem. You know, we used to get fifty to a hundred applicants, now we get three or four. So makes it hard to find qualified people.
Mm-hmm.
Um, real quick, the DPW supervisor, supervisor negotiations are underway. Um, we uh are in the middle of both the conservation officer and social worker slash opioid coordinator positions and um, and identifying candidates there. And of the thirteen individual employment contracts, two of them are done, one is in progress, and the next are up in February. Under the drive the process improvement, uh, there were a number of um software vendors, I, I love the new trend in software now is, you know, whatever your issue is, GOV on the end of it, right? So we have procurement software, that's OpenGOV, uh, that's procured and in use, actively being used. You see Kathy here every week, um, that's all being facilitated now through a software which is uh much more efficient. Uh, budgeting software, Michelle is actively working with our finance team to implement this, that's ClearGOV, and then we have a CRM, a customer relations management uh software tool called GoGOV, also um in process that's been procured and is in the middle of setting it all up and getting ready to, to go live with. Um, you guys identified um a one-day liquor license process, that's, I, from my perspective, it's working really well.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's efficient for the public, efficient for you, efficient for me. Um, it seems to be working well.
That's liquor.gov, is that?
That's right, yeah, it should, it might as well be. Um, the bathing, uh, beach community room uh use policy, Heidi and I met today, we'll be going out to the bathing beach, uh, the bathhouse tomorrow, meeting with Alan Peral of the bathing, of the.
Trustees.
Bathing Beach Trustees, and uh working with him to finalize that use policy and application process. Which is annoyingly complex, by the way, just throwing it out there for the public to understand. These things, they all seem like, just make it a, a use policy. It's not that easy, you got to think of a thousand different things, and they end up being five pages long. So, anyway, um, Select Board Monthly Newsletter, our chairwoman, uh, Ms. Klein, got her monthly newsletter out last week, so that's great. Item three, this is the identify um revenue opportunities category. Um, a lot of this was uh initiated by the, through the sustainability, uh, Sustainable Budgeting Task Force. Um, we have updated several sets of fees through gas, plumbing, and electrical. Uh, you know, Art is working diligently with developers on a lot of this for, uh, he wants to initiate an economic development plan, that is in initial conversations, he's working with developers uh to identify opportunities for them to develop their property and increase the, the commercial tax rolls. Um, I am actively working with our state delegation and others to consider the real estate transfer fee as whether, and to see whether or not that's an option and what that might look like. The Art again is working with the MWRA and the town of Waymouth and a few other towns to identify ac, access points to, and, and timelines for access to MWRA water that will help with any South Hingham development, should that come to fruition. Um, we are, Art is working with the HDIC to set some ongoing goals there, and of course the naming by law policy, we are now going to um take up again next week. Regarding implementing the master plan, um, you know, there were several components of, of, of that, the, first of all, the master plan itself was presented to the board in June, the Climate Action Plan was presented here in July, um, with the Implementation Commission there, then established. The Master Plan Implementation Committee uh set its Select Board liaison in Liz Klein, and then we had the Affordable Housing Trust update also presented in June. So a lot's happened with regards to implementing the master plans goals. And then the larger capital projects, of course, we have um the new elementary school and the public safety facility, both of those projects have had their initial presentations to the board, those will be ongoing as the projects evolve, and uh both are actively under construction. Uh, the senior center feasibility study, the Select Board has identified two sites for, for the, for that detailed study. The Wharf Walls consultant has been contracted to complete the design and permitting, and I'm happy to announce today that we've received a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar CZM coastal zone management grant from the state to forward that effort, which is terrific news. And that's at the, um, that's the, the hard work of several people spearheaded by J.R. Frye, our town engineer. Um, ADA self-assessment, that, that is a act of work, that's a final draft for the board uh to review here soon, you'll probably have that within a month, is my guess. And then thirty Summer Street acquisition, that assessment is actively underway. So again, that's far from everything that was on our goals list, but it's, you know, some of the progress that we've seen in Q-one, it's a highlights list, there's other stuff, but short of doing this over two hours, we thought we would abbreviate.
No, I appreciate the highlights, um, and one of the things that we committed to as a board was reviewing this publicly on a quarterly basis, so this is the first of that. Bill, do you want to start?
Uh, just one question, you and I have talked about this in the past, obviously, uh, we have some uh important um positions we need to fill in DPW. I've had two, I've talked to two residents about possibly applying there.
Yep.
Both residents have mentioned to me the costs, one of them had a CDL expired.
Yeah.
Another one doesn't have a CDL. Both of them said to me, hey, that CDL is going to cost me maybe five thousand dollars or more, I mean, maybe eight, I think. So it's a significant cost for someone coming in at a lower level in DPW. Has there been any more thought to doing what we do with police and fire where we pay for the academy?
Yes.
And then we contract that employee to two years with the department. Um, for example, a new police recruit comes in, I think they're obligated to three years, or they have to pay back their academy.
That's right.
Could we do something similar with the DPW? We pay for the CDL, we, we get them trained up, and then we just factor that cost into a contractual agreement over the course of a year or two.
That's exactly what we're doing, um, that, the, a hundred percent, all the way down, right down to the detail of the years. So two years in, um, after two years, they would not owe us if they left the cost of that uh CDL, but yes, we're going to cover the cost of the CDL, and Randy can correct, uh, he's not online anymore. I believe we're also covering their time at the training. So it's, it's, we're trying to make it as low a barrier as possible uh to our new applicants.
Yeah, great.
We are asking that they come in with a CDL permit. So when they start, we'll start them at the union rate, but they have to have a CDL permit. The reason for that is they technically need to be able to drive a truck in order to do that, to do the work of that, as a minimum qualification for any of our DPW jobs. So if they have a permit, they can drive the truck, they just have to have somebody with them.
Is, is, well, thank you for that information. Could we even not require it until they get to level two or three? So they would have a year as a, and, and their, and I forget what the DPW levels are, but we could say, hey, you don't, the permit would get you through the first year, year and a half, and now the CDL, you got to get it eighteen months into the job.
Yeah, we, we want.
I don't know if we can do that or not.
We want them to get the CDL as soon as possible.
Right.
They have to come in with the permit. If they have the permit, they can start, and then we'll work them, with them, to get them in through the, the state's licensing um process.
Great.
So whatever that is. And again, we're covering the cost and sending them to the class, so.
I think that would, I've had two residents now mention that to me, so that's great. I think it, that is, might be an impediment to getting those DPW positions filled, so I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, we have so many vacancies, tell everybody you know. To apply.
That's good, thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah.
Joe?
Um, two, two things. First, our first goal was actually to have these quarterly reviews, and so we've accomplished our first goal.
Check.
Which is great, yes, we, we have, you know, and we have to make sure we keep on track there. Um, and second, looking at your point four, which is implement the master plan, including climate resiliency. Um, so there is a master plan associated with the harbor and the wharfs.
Yep.
That I do not see listed here unless I'm missing it. Um, and I know that that is, the committee has been working on this, um, and I, I think there's going to be a slight delay in them moving forward with their master plan, I just want to make sure that it stays on our goals and objectives.
It is, there are, there's another probably thirty objectives and goals that aren't in this list, that are on our master list, that just because they weren't completed and we didn't have a designated highlight, what did we make this rotation? But yes, it's on the list.
Right.
No other questions, thank you.
Excellent, yeah, so that will be scheduled as soon as it's ready.
Yep, that's right.
Um, well, thank you, Tom and Art and Michelle for putting this together. Um, certainly building the team is a priority for all of us, um, and we're trying to be patient because that takes time, but um I appreciate all the energy going towards that, because that is probably one of the single most important things on here, to get us where we need to go with all the others. Um, drive process improvement, we've been very committed to finding efficiencies, using software, automating processes where we can, so that, that I think is moving along nicely. Um, I hope the chair uh newsletter update goes well. We'll, we'll see, um, but my plan is to send that e, each month, um, and, and certainly open to people's feedback on that. Um, as far as revenue opportunities, um, just want to make a, a mention that the Sustainable Budget Task Force is still meeting um every couple of weeks and, and trying to move these things forward. Um, as far as the master plan, that, master plan committee is getting, is getting up and running, we have a meeting this week, um, so I will have something to report on that next week. Um, so that, that is moving, and the Climate Action, uh, or the Climate Implementation Commission, I know they're, they're getting ready to, to start as well. Great news on the CZM grant award.
Yeah.
That's another focus area for us, um, certainly to, to be aggressive about pursuing grant opportunities, so that's, that's great news. Um, so thank you. We're moving, lots, lots is happening. Um, so appreciate the update, and thank you for everybody's hard work.
Of course.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. All right, next on the agenda are appointments. I believe we have a few.
I, I'm gonna recommend two appointments this evening, happy to make a motion when you're ready.
Okay.
Make a motion to redesignate the appointment of Carol Piles from the at-large member on the Historic Districts Commission to the member who was a resident in a historic district on the Historic Districts Commission for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
And I'd make a, a motion for a second appointment to redesignate the appointment of Daniel Clark from the resident in a historic district on the Historic Districts Commission to the at-large member on the Historic Districts Commission for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent, thank you. Are there any other appointments this evening?
Bill, did you want to do another one?
Um, I, I was planning on it, I don't, but I don't have the language on it.
I forgot to put.
Do we know what the term would be?
You're right, I don't. We can do it Tuesday.
Well, let's just do it next week, we'll get it right. Yeah, I don't know what the term.
Sorry, that's my fault. I didn't get it on.
We can do it next week, it's, no rush there.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is public comment. Any questions or comments from members of the public on an item we haven't discussed yet? Seeing none. Okay, next, town administrator and select board reports. Michelle, do you want to start us off?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. Art?
Sure, I have one item. Uh, our health department is requesting COVID-nineteen test kits from the state on a no-charge basis. Uh, we expect to have them in hand in a couple of weeks, and when we have them in hand, we'll share a plan for making them available to the public.
Excellent, thank you.
I can just add to that, so now the government is making them available, again, at no charge, you just need to go on the website.
Correct.
And you can order them, I think you get four, I forget what the number is, so, uh, we'll have two sources for no-charge uh tests, test kits.
Excellent, thank you.
Great.
Tom?
Uh, just a couple of quick things, so I don't normally talk about everybody we onboard, but I spent some time with them today and we're here. Uh, both, a gentleman named Brian, um, Peckinon is our new Assistant Water Superintendent, he starts today, and uh Stevie Swinson is our new um, uh, GIS Coordinator, and she also started today. So it's two exciting positions, both will be seated over at the DPW, but uh Stevie's role will obviously uh cover the entirety of the town. That's a, that's a position I'm very excited about. Um, and then also, I just wanted to note that we've received a thirty thousand dollar grant in addition to the two hundred and seventy thousand dollar CZM grant, another thirty thousand dollars from the state for some housing work that we're doing. So um, yes, we're actively pursuing grants, they came up at the department head meeting, several different grant opportunities were mentioned today that people are pursuing, so it's exciting. We're, I know it was an SBTF um goal, and uh, and thankfully, and as always, our staff is diligently seeking all grant opportunities that they can.
Excellent.
Yep.
Do you have any liquor license to review?
Uh, no, no.
Okay, Bill?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Joe?
Um, I have three items I want to cover. Um, first, uh, the Hingham Police Department did their um coffee with a cop. Um, they were at Red Eye Roasters, and I believe also at the Senior Center. Um, I heard from a number of residents at Red Eye who thought it was incredible, uh, the officers were outgoing, they made such a positive impression that people wanted to tell me how great it was. So I think this is a wonderful outreach for the police department, and hopefully they will continue it, so, and I've notified uh Chief Jones, and he's notified the officers there, so it was really very well done. Um, second is that I will be holding office hours in two Wednesdays, which I believe is the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, October twenty-fifth.
At six PM, uh, and the purpose of this office hour is going to be very specific, which is to discuss parking issues associated with the use of town hall uh by the seniors. Uh, so I know that, I, I've gotten a number of comments, uh, and I want to make sure people have an opportunity, um, not just one-on-one, but in a group to have that discussion with me. Um, and so that will be at the south hearing room on the third floor.
That's right.
Uh, at six o'clock, two Wednesdays from this coming Wednesday. And the uh third item I wanted to discuss is um really bad news, sad news, is what's going on in, in Israel. in Israel. So last night, congregation Shere Shalom in Hingham held a special service entitled, "A Service of Solidarity with Israel, Supporting and Standing Up for Israel in Her Time of Need and Sorrow." The service was led by the congregation's clergy, was intended by, attended by many Jews and persons of other faiths, with the support of the members of the Hingham Hall Religious Leaders Association. The service was in response to events that occurred in Israel this past Saturday, October 7th, which was the Jewish Sabbath, and also an important religious holiday for Jews known as Simchat Torah. On that day, the Hamas terrorist organization launched a surprise attack on Israel, and this was not a battlefield attack, this was not a military operation, it was a massacre of Jews. Firsthand accounts and videos show babies, their mothers, their fathers, their grandparents, often in their bedrooms, being killed by Hamas terrorists. In some cases, the Jewish victims were beheaded. Some of the victims who were killed were actually advocates for Palestinian rights. Some of the victims were Holocaust survivors. Other victims were in the area singing and dancing at a musical event known as the Nova Festival. None of that matters, they were all slaughtered because they were Jews. At least 260 bodies were found at the site of the music festival. The death toll in Israel has reached over 1,000, with at least 14 American citizens killed. Citizens and dual nationals from more than 20 countries have been reported killed or remain missing following the Hamas attack in Israel. Jews were also kidnapped, well over 100 Israelis were abducted and taken into Gaza, including Israeli-Americans. The identities of some, but not all, of the kidnapped victims have been disclosed. We know of several families, including one family, where grandparents, parents, a three-year-old and a nine-month-old, were all kidnapped by Hamas and are now being held in Gaza. Among the persons kidnapped were Jews with Massachusetts connections, however, we are currently not aware of any kidnapped victims with a connection to Hingham. There are friends and families of Hingham residents who are in Israel right now, we have reports that many of them are living in bomb shelters or safe rooms as a result of ongoing attacks by Hamas. Today, our president, Joe Biden, made the following statement, quote, "There are moments in this life, and I mean this literally, when pure, unadulterated evil is unleashed on the world. The people of Israel lived through one such moment this weekend." President Biden went on to state, "The bloody hands of the terrorist organization Hamas, a group whose stated purpose for being is to kill Jews. This was not an act of sheer evil. More than 1,000 civilians were slaughtered, not just killed, slaughtered, in Israel. My hope is that the town of Hingham will stand with the people of Israel in the weeks and months ahead." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for reading that. It took a lot of courage to read, obviously it was difficult to hear, and what we're seeing happening in Israel is, is, it's just, it's so violent and tragic, it's difficult to watch, and certainly hate has no home in Hingham, and we will stand by that, and certainly be thinking of the people in Israel and the families, we're so interconnected at this point, it certainly affects all of us, so thank you. I don't know if I want to go after that, just a few things, I did want to thank Special Police Officer Jim Wells for his many years of service to Hingham, he retired this week. There is a ceremony on the 12th, October 12th, at 12:00 PM to honor Herbert Foss down at the Hingham Shipyard, the public is welcome at that, and this weekend, October 15th, is the Arts Walk, certainly a lovely day for the community to come together downtown. And tonight, and the reason for my purple t-shirt is, it's the Mattie's Promise soccer game, so our high school students and community are honoring Mattie McCoy and Mattie's Promise tonight, so we're certainly thinking of them as we're sitting here today. Anything else my colleagues want to add?
I forgot, Joe asked me if I had a liquor license, I did, of course, which I'm sure you knew. We issued one for Le Petit Maison, at 142 North Street for their 25th anniversary celebration for Saturday, October 14th, from 11:00 to 6:00, there'll be 75 people in attendance, and there is a police detail required.
Yes, thank you, and yes, congratulations to Le Petit Maison that has been in downtown Hingham for 25 years, and continues to be an integral part of our downtown community. There's nothing else, take a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well, we're adjourned at 7:15.
Recording stopped.